All right, Madam Chair, we are ready to go and I will keep a lookout for Commissioner Rogers for you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Clerk Moss. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, February 8th, Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Clerk Moss, could you take the role, please?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Commissioner Phi. Commissioner Threes.
Here.
Vice Chair Willie.
Here.
Chair Harrington.
Here. And Commissioner Rogers will be joining us briefly in this very fine work session, the beginning of February. So we have a lot of items on our agenda today. We're going to start first with board and leadership communication. Which of the board members would like to go first? Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
I haven't gone first for a while, so I'll take the pressure off of Commissioner Phi. Let's see, I've only got two things to report on. There was just a lot of meetings, but for the reporting today, I met with Kevin Hanway. And I think Commissioners Threes and Chair, you've met with Kevin as well, got an update on healthcare for all Oregonians. And it was, it was good to see what I guess is in play. The, this is going to be a couple of year project. And so we'll see how legislature deals with this and everything else. But if you two want to chime in on your time, that'd be great. Mostly, I'm pretty happy to report that we actually, I actually had an interview with a reporter that is going to be covering Washington County for Pamplin Media. And it was, it's the first time I've had, actually had a conversation with a reporter that wasn't specific about something. We, we just had a conversation about what the county's doing with homelessness and broadband and flavored tobacco and timber payments and, and a whole bunch of things. So got him caught up there, but it's good to have, good to have a reporter that we can call on when we need to have some, I guess, some media attention. So, and just a reminder, I am speaking at the North Plains Chamber luncheon today, so I will be departing at 11:30, probably be back about 1:30. And if we were on the agenda, it doesn't look like I'll miss too much, but just an FYI. That's all I got.
Who would like to go next?
I can go next. I had the same meeting with Kevin, so I can check that off my list to, to talk about. I did meet with Commissioner Fisher this last week, prior to the AOC meetings yesterday. And the purpose of that meeting was to really talk about District 8 and our relationship to each other in District 8, and then also our relationship to AOC. So we've got a future meeting scheduled with Gina Nickel. This is really about some of the issues that actually came up yesterday in our legislative session. I'll let the Chair talk about that. I sat in at, to the legislative session as the alternate to Commissioner Fisher. And it went very late. I didn't even get a chance to sit in on the board meeting. So I'll let the Chair talk about that. I also met with Troy Shin from Pamplin Media. I have a central cultural meeting this week, and I also have a PAB meeting this week. So I, oh, and one other thing, I did meet with Columbia Sportswear this past week, and I've, I've talked with the Chair a bit about that. It was in relationship to preschool programs, three and four-year-old preschool programs. So with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner, the Honorable Commissioner Phi.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for that kind of remarks. And thank you for that break, Vice Chair Willie. I'm on my, I seem to have computer problems this week. So since last night, my computer is updating. So I'm on the iPad. Thank goodness, the county staff thought about getting me an iPad. So I don't see anybody else except Commissioner Threes. That's the only person I see on my, I'm learning to navigate that. I do want to start off sending my deepest apology to Street Trust. Last night, we had a really steam, I was part of a steam panelist last night. Sort of talking about the transportation and, and specifically to our county, Washington County. So, and my computer broke down halfway through. So I apologize. I want to do it again. Please invite me. And next time, we'll make sure the computer is updated. I think the problem was it wasn't updated and it's still taking time to update. So, sorry, Sarah and Anuch and everyone that organized that panel. It was myself and four, five other, four other experts around transportation, including our equity officer, Latricia Tillman was also represented with me from Washington County. And then also we had Tom Carles as well. I, I think, other than that, I think everything was covered. I think the only thing that wasn't mentioned yet that I was part of last week was Commissioner Threes and I had a Parks meeting around Parks Fund, a presentation that we're having this afternoon. And it was really a great conversation around a lot of moving money. And one of the things that I've been thinking about after our meeting, Commissioner Threes was, and this is a, when Tehalum Ridge Park was opened, that first week, I went with a friend of mine, who is also a she, and I remember asking her, hey, what happens if there's a security concern? Like, you know, how quick they come? Because she was part of the planning committee for that with Metro. And so after our conversation, Commissioner Threes, I've been thinking about, like, maybe today we can bring up the idea of, like, is there a security, public safety funding allocated for parks? And, and so I'm interested in having that conversation. And there's a, I think, Under Sheriff Cook had a lot of great ideas. I had a briefing with him yesterday as well and around putting, you know, there's opportunities to put, like, security cameras and allocate some fundings for public safety to respond if there's any concerns. So I'll, I'll bring that up. I just wanted to review on that. Other than that, I'll turn it to you, Chair Harrington, Michael T. You. And if there's a Commissioner Rogers here, I turn it to you, Rory.
As Commissioner Rogers has joined us, go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
Commissioner, Commissioner Phi, just quickly, we might, you might also want to be thinking about our trail system in relationship to public safety. So.
Yes, absolutely.
Hey, I'm sorry you can't see us all. That's unfortunate. I know that when you get IT problems, it's just a pain you know where. I mean, it really is. Not a lot to report. Last Friday, I had a meeting with the Oregon Transportation Commission Chair, as well as the Director of ODOT and what was supposed to be a half-hour meeting turned into over an hour and a half. I needed to, I needed to go. So it was me who was pushing to leave, not them. And so it's nice when you have the, I guess, the two most senior people in the state of Oregon in that arena sharing ideas. So it was, it was very interesting. Last night, we had our Area 1 Act meeting, chatted a bit with Travis, and I don't know Travis, but we're still looking at that federal infrastructure investment program. Lots of buckets of money. What appears to be a lot of money, but it's not when you spread it like peanut butter. But chatted about that, safe routes to school. Talked about how to, to do some of those projects that need to be done and an assortment of other administrative issues. I'm meeting with the Work Systems this Wednesday. We seem to have an array of meetings nowadays in regard to financing and what they're doing. And I'm concerned about, obviously, the legislature and how they might approach some of the issues that they have there. So that's always been a hot topic. But beyond that, just normal stuff, assortment of meetings. So I will now turn it to the Chair.
Thank you, Commissioners. And I want to start with a welcome to Mr. Brad Anderson, who is one of our very senior attorneys here in our county council office. Our county council, Tom Carr, is away on vacation. So thank you for providing that coverage, Brad. Good to have you for the next couple of meetings. So sitting in the hot seat, so to speak.
Thank you, Chair.
So I'll just mention a few things. I was asked by a couple of people over the, the end of last week and through the weekend about when might our mask, indoor mask mandate across the state be lifted? And just yesterday, the Governor's Office and the Oregon Health Authority announced that the statewide mask mandate for indoor mask requirements in public safety, in public spaces, will be lifted by March 31st or sooner, dependent upon key metrics such as having 400 persons or less in the hospital with COVID. I know I'm not giving the exact details. Masks will be required in schools through March 31st so that there is good certainty there. But I, I promised some folks that I would inquire about that subject this morning, and we heard the answer yesterday from the Oregon Health Authority. And I was at a community meeting last night, and folks, some of the folks hadn't heard yet. So I wanted to just briefly mention that whole subject and highlight it for everyone's needs. The other question that I've heard from a lot of folks, and this is related to how we went over our census information last week, and the fact that over the last six months, this board has been involved with a half dozen interim state legislative appointments. The question is in regard to precinct maps. We have an election coming up in just over three months. We do know that the precinct maps will be changing based upon the new census. I don't happen to know who determines that. Is it done by the Secretary of State's office? Is it done through county elections in cooperation with the state? And what's the holdup? So we're, one of the key learnings through this whole two-year and running global pandemic is that folks are looking for a little bit of certainty. And so Ms. Angie, if you could, please find the answer to that question for us and share that with the board, that would be wonderful. And who knows, maybe that's a good social media post for the agency as well. As Commissioner Threes mentioned, we had the, the monthly Association of Oregon Counties Legislative Committee meeting and board meeting. Prior to that, Friday, was the Public Safety Steering Committee. That meeting was pretty smooth, the Public Safety Steering Committee. Some straightforward work was done to refer support for particular bills such as Senate Bill 1510, reworking of House Bill 2002. And there is an amendment that our team, our GR team is up to speed on. And this is related to getting $10 million appropriated for Justice Reinvestment Equity Programs. So this is not, through this amendment, the funding would come from the State General Fund as opposed to from the Justice Reinvestment Act dollars, which is a good thing. Then there's also some information with regard to funding of the District Attorney's Office, but it's a subset of the report. So I asked AOC to help me find the full report so that I could make sure that we all have access to it. Now for the Legislative Committee and the board meeting. As Commissioner Threes highlighted, the Legislative Committee meeting got a little long yesterday. It went over quite a bit of time and was quite frustrating from my standpoint in that, from topic to topic, from the, the report outs from each of the key area legislative steering committees, it was very clear that members, various members of the Legislative Committee hadn't even looked at the packet. This really came obvious to me when there was a recommendation to support a, a new funding package out of Health and Human Services. One was on Project Turnkey 2.0. And there were all kinds of questions about, well, how useful was Project Turnkey 1.0? It's like, hmm. I finally pointed out that the whole report, a quite concise, useful report, is right in the packet. The committee got very bogged down around a childcare funding package. And some members started looking at the community-based organizations that might receive the funding, should these packages pass, and started criticizing those organizations for the other work that they've been doing in other areas not related to childcare. It really got very long. A lot of discussion, and it didn't get much better than that after that with regard to the natural resources recommendations. We did get through the meeting. It took three hours to get through that meeting, just over three hours. Then there was a break before the board meeting, and I was able to attend all of 10 minutes of the board meeting before I had to leave. So needless to say, it was a frustrating experience. This is not unusual. It's been getting worse and worse and worse. And the organization has been spending more time coming apart and getting away from the many needs that we have in common than, and how the 36 counties may come together as an association for the benefit of our communities and instead highlighting the differences amongst all 36 counties. Commissioner Threes.
I just want to add to, to your piece of this report that, and that's, that is the focus of the meeting with Sonia Fisher and the discussion moving forward with District 8. So I just want to underscore that we have seen the divide is, is getting larger and larger. Let's just put it that way. So I think that that's a, I think the Chair's been very discreet in her description. The reality, the reality is it's, it's a difficult, it's, it's difficult to navigate. And it, for me, it, it was really difficult at the November conference, and it has really degraded since. So.
Yep. Which is quite concerning because based upon the needs of the organization through the board packet, there were illustrations of increasing dues by various percentages. And the three metro counties provide a significant portion of the agency's funding. And that is in addition to at least Washington County and Multnomah County having their own multi-person government relations team. And so it really does call the question, what are we getting for the public's money that we are choosing to invest from Washington County? It's not the first time the question has come up. But I think it's something that needs to be looked at potentially as we, we go ahead. So it's unfortunate because I do have an effective government relations team at AOC. So we'll see what happens. So I don't think there's really much in, in the way of other meetings for me to mention at this point. Helped staff, you know, you can see through the, the nature of last week's packet and this week's packet and coming packets that I frequently am asked by staff to review documents and presentations in advance and help shape them so that what it is they're asking us to do and the value benefit to our community is much clearer. So we'll get to that later as we go through the agenda today. Go ahead, Commissioner Threes.
Sorry to interrupt again. I did, I, I did forget to mention in my report that I testified yesterday at the Senate Committee, Finance Committee on Gain Share. So I just wanted to make sure that I, I mentioned that. It was, I was provided talking points by Erin Doyle, and the, the, the key message was certainty. Making sure that we, we, we can understand into the future what, what we can expect. So I just wanted to let my fellow Commissioners note that.
That's great. Thank you very much for participating in that. All righty, we'll turn it over to Leadership Communications. Good morning, Ms. Angie.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. I do have some good news as far as COVID cases in the workforce. Our COVID cases are substantially down. We do have 20 new cases this week. Keep in mind, though, we do anticipate that that is a tad higher than the number that I report because we are not actively doing contact tracing. However, that's a good, it's always good to see when numbers are going down in this case versus going up. The latest community pandemic numbers, we are seeing 674 cases per 100,000 population, which represents a 15% test positivity rate as of February 7th. So what does this mean? This represents a 35% decrease in cases since last week. So the cases within our community are also going down. And Chair, you had mentioned the mask mandate. So there is another data point that I just found interesting that I wanted to share relative to the mask mandate. Oregon Health Authority says eight of 10 continue to report wearing masks indoors here within our state. And because of this and the relatively high vaccination rate, the state has the third lowest case rate and seventh lowest death rate in the country. So our safety measures have proven successful, and we will continue to watch these case rates as we proceed to March 31st. This is the time of year that many of our community nonprofits, community-based organizations, complete their annual reports and really share that information broadly to the, to the community and want to share that also with your board. We will be, as we get those requests, we'll be adding those to the constituent PAC reports so that you can see those annual reports and other reports from community partners. We will be continuing same practice as last year due to the length of the board meetings and business needs of the board. There's just not time to open up additional board time to community partners. So I just wanted to, to let you know that and how we will be providing that information to the board. And that completes my weekly update.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson.
Morning, Chair, Board. As the Chair has already described, Tom is out right now, getting a well-deserved break and celebrating a big birthday. He will be out from the 8th to the 21st, but we're here to meet your needs, whatever you need. I'm glad that everybody's talking about the mask rule update. We got that yesterday. And I was meeting this morning with our public health folks to try to figure out what it all means right now. So we'll hopefully have some clarity for you soon on those. And then, as you'll hear later today, the legislature is in full swing right now. And GR staff is working pretty closely with our office. We are reviewing a lot of bills just for the legal implications on it. So your staff in our office and the GR staff are doing a really good job right now. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Juckers.
Thank you, Chair, and members of Clean Water Services Board of Directors. I'm stepping in for Diane today, who's out. Similar to County Administrator Angie, we are seeing a real dip in the number of cases of COVID within our workforce. We have two positive cases and 12 primary exposures as of this week. And as we shared with you in last Wednesday's Privy, we've seen that same pretty dramatic decline in evidence of COVID within our sewage sampling. We really started to see that, started to fall off beginning of the week of the 26th of January. We'll get our new numbers later today for last week, and we anticipate that that will continue to go down. So thank you very much.
Thanks to our leadership team. Really appreciate it. Okay, we have, wow, we have five different topics for the remainder of our agenda. So let's get to it. The first one is with regard to economic development. I'd like to welcome our, our primary economic development manager, Mr. Matt Kriegy. Welcome, Matt. Take it away.
Great. Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board members. It's terrific to be here with you all this morning. I've been eager to have this conversation with you all since I started with the county last year, and I'm really happy to be here. So for the record, my name is Matt Krieg. I'm the county's Economic Development Manager. This morning, I will be presenting on the proposed 2022 work plan for the county's economic development program. So I have a, a short presentation that summarizes the work plan, and after which I look forward to a discussion with you all. Clerk Moss, will you advance the slide, please? Great. So here's an outline of this morning's presentation. First, I'll touch just briefly on the program's background. And I'll talk about the proposed framework for economic development and with a working definition of equitable economic development here in Washington County. And last, I will present the work plan itself, which includes economic challenges, priorities for how we spend our limited capacity and resources, and actions that we propose to carry out in 2022. The primary questions that I have for your board for this work are, are we focused on the right challenges? Do we have the right priorities to address those challenges? And are the proposed priority work plan actions aligned with your expectations? So we'll get into that more. Next slide, please. Just briefly here to provide some context to our viewers and level set for this conversation, there's a brief summary of how the county's economic development program was started. In 2019, your board identified economic development as a priority and allocated resources to it in the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. Beginning in 2020, the COVID-19 pandemic elevated the need to support the local economy in the county using CARES Act funds and other resources mobilized to support businesses and workers through the first phase of the pandemic. I was hired on as the county's first economic development manager in the spring of 2021. At the direction of your board, the economic development program was established with priorities to build from the county's equity, diversity, and inclusion efforts with a program that focuses on advancing economic opportunities for marginalized communities across the county. And also to provide direct support to small cities, urban unincorporated areas, and rural areas, while also seeking to bring together countywide partners and lead countywide initiatives. After spending almost a full year getting to know folks across After spending almost a full year getting to know folks across the county, I believe that we can do all of these things, help the smaller cities and new UAs, while convene countywide conversations about economic development, all while grounding this work with an equitable approach and practices. As I continue this presentation, I'll provide examples of what this work can look like. Next slide, please. Before I get into the proposed work plan itself, I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about what I mean by economic development and how I propose that we consider the concept of equitable economic development. In its simplest of terms, economic development is about the investments in in interactions between people, business, and place. A thorough approach to economic development considers the interconnections between these three dimensions. Traditional approaches to economic development focus on total economic growth. And many economic development programs are focused on business attraction and retention. While these are important efforts, we have an opportunity to do something different and more meaningful for everyone in Washington County, an opportunity to target the negative economic impacts that have caused generational disparities in different communities' ability to access opportunity and wealth. The definition of equitable economic development presented on this slide is intentionally simple. In its simplicity, it provides a platform for the county and partners to build a program that speaks to the needs of our local communities and businesses. It sets the stage for an equitable approach to economic development that considers not just total growth, but how economic policy and practices impact diverse communities. With a proactive approach, equity-centered economic development can seek to counter negative economic conditions brought on by years of discrimination and disinvestment. Next slide, please. I hope you can see those charts. So here at Washington County, the county's priority for integrating racial equity practices and policies can inform how we conduct this important work. In this way, the economic development program can build from the equity work your board started with several efforts, including the DEI Resolution of twenty-twenty and the strong equity-centered economic recovery work that the county has taken on since the beginning of the pandemic. Centering equity with economic development can take several forms. And we have much work to do to identify the programs, policies, and practices that will make a difference for communities that have not traditionally had access to opportunity. A formative part of this work will be to ask questions about how economic realities of communities across Washington County and identify options to address their needs. Data analysis, the investigation of demographic, economic, and business data should play a central role. As it is, thorough analysis, both quantitative and qualitative, that we can understand the scale and the detail of each community's economic challenges. For an example, I have two charts here on this slide. On the slide, on the chart to the left, shows unemployment by race and ethnicity in Washington County. The viewer will note that the Latino-Latino community in Washington County has the lowest unemployment rate of any presented demographic group in the chart. These two thousand nineteen, this is pre-COVID, data shows the rate for this community less than three percent. The second chart on the right shows the percentages of working poor in Washington County by race and ethnicity. Working poor is defined as employed individuals under two hundred percent of the poverty line. Contrasting with the first chart, the Latina-Latina community has the highest percentage out of the presented groups with over sixteen percent of this community's population classified as working poor. If you'll recall, the Latino-Latino community comprises seventeen percent of the population of Washington County. Had we stopped at unemployment rate on the chart to the left, we might not realize that the lived realities of many in the Latino-Latino community in Washington County is to work multiple jobs to make ends meet. The point is that by digging deeper and considering multiple data points, we can start to understand the challenges faced by marginalized communities. And from that depth of analysis, we can, with community partners, identify appropriate actions to get to the root of the problem. I will come back to this later, but one of the proposed actions in this year's work plan is to conduct a study to set a baseline of data analysis to help us understand and track local economic challenges. The last point that I want to make in this slide is that, as a final note, we advance this work with humility and as part of our equity journey. We admittedly do not have all the solutions today, but we're working closely with others within the county, like the OEICE, the Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement, and community-based organizations outside of the county to listen, learn, and approach equitable economic development together. Next slide, please. To bring the framework together, I propose that we consider economic development, the economic development program that is based in this simple rubric of people, business, and place, all while founded on this equitable approach and practices. We can be more specific about what we're trying to do. For people, we are talking about the upward economic mobility of workers. This is about presenting opportunities for youth, such as apprenticeships, career exposure, pathways to community college technical training, and beyond. It's also about training for current workers, retraining for those that have lost their work, and linking workers to local industries that need help. For business, this is about fostering resilient systems so that entrepreneurs, small businesses, and others can access the technical resources and capital that they need to make their businesses flourish. For place, we can consider place-based strategies to promote economic growth, including brownfield redevelopment programs and collaborative project work with our colleagues in land use and transportation and housing. Again, I put this forth as a starting point. We can continue to consider our role and focus as we move towards a broader economic development strategy in future years. Next slide, please. Here are a few examples of how we're already doing this work. Under the the people dimension, we are working to get the workforce, the county's workforce dollars, ARPA workforce dollars, out the door. We have a solicitation on the street right now and we're doing a lot of outreach to make sure that all organizations that do this type of work, big and small, have an ability to access some of the funds. I'm also super excited to announce that we have hired the county's first workforce development coordinator. Greg Golo Bordoko started a few weeks ago and has been helping with the solicitation of workforce dollars and is going to help us work with our partners and get to more of a strategy, kind of aligning programs around workforce development. So very excited about that. Under business, we have a number of ongoing contracts with organizations across Washington County focused on urban unincorporated areas and focused on helping communities that, again, have not had traditional access to opportunity, get the resources they need to make sure that their businesses not just survive, but thrive through this phase of the pandemic. We're also in conversation with community-based organizations about what a business support network might look like. So we know that if there are referrals within the system or if there's conversation between organizations, we know that that leverages least resources and provides a stronger network for businesses. Regarding place, I have been working with a number of organizations to represent the county at place-focused local and regional economic development forums, projects, initiatives. What does this look like? You know, I have been joining my colleague Bruce Coleman from Sherwood on the Sherwood West Expansion Area Advisory Committee, working with colleagues at Metro and Greater Portland, Inc. on the SEDS. That's the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Implementation Task Force that builds off of the Regional Economic Recovery Plan. I'm also working with the City of Hillsborough on their Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. Next slide, please. In the work plan, I present one primary challenge that we have for this year. And that is the primary challenge for the local economy is is to target those inequitable impacts and disruptions brought on by the pandemic. So even as we close in on the two-year mark of the pandemic, we are still seeing worker shortages, supply chain challenges, rising costs, and other effects that continue to disrupt the local economy. These impacts are more acutely felt by those that cannot work remotely and businesses that are anchored to a storefront. The pandemic has also amplified negative economic impacts to communities that have not traditionally had access to opportunity. So we're in this point where we are going to look to transition from economic response activities, that kind of what are we doing to keep people afloat, to how do we address some of those inequities that have been in the economy for years? And how do we make sure that folks get opportunity so to we can move forward and move above where they were before the pandemic? To address this challenge and to continue to build the economic development program, I offer three priorities for this year. The first is to promote an equitable economic recovery. That's that's going to be our primary focus. The second is to continue to build a strong organizational foundation. This program is new. We're just getting it going here, so we have a lot of work to do. And the third is to continue to build relationships and seek partnership opportunities. One of the powers that we have as a county is the power to convene. Whether we have we have a number of cities and folks all across rural Washington County and unincorporated urban Washington County. And we, given the scale and the scope of the county, we have the ability to bring folks together to address your challenges. Next slide, please. So what does this work look like? What do I mean when I say, well, we're going to promote equitable economic recovery? We're going to build a strong foundation. Well, with promoting an equitable economic recovery, we are in a fortunate position to have, although limited, some American Rescue Plan funds from the federal government. And we are being very careful and thoughtful about how those dollars get out the door to focus again on this equitable economic development. We're going to continue to spend most of this year working with our partners across the county to make sure that those dollars get to the community organizations, get to the businesses, and help workers access opportunity here as we hopefully start to move out of this out of this pandemic here. A lot of this work, the second bullet point, a lot of this work here is going to require coordination with local, regional, and state partners to advance economic recovery. So we've we're keeping an eye on the governor's workforce announcement, and we are very excited about that. We are keeping in touch with some of our regional partners like Greater Portland, Inc., or Coal PAC in Western Washington County to think about other external funds and resources that we might be able to bring into Washington County to help with economic recovery. Under build a strong organizational foundation, the first bullet point there is about a very specific deliverable, actually, probably the most specific deliverable that we have here, which is to conduct and conduct an economic data and business connection study to create a database foundation for equity-focused actions and systems to track progress. So what are we targeting? How might we know if we're making progress? How do we know how businesses are doing in urban unincorporated Washington County or rural Washington County? I hope that this study can help us think about the the data that we're tracking and help us engage with businesses so that we have a foundation of data and we can better understand how to create programs and policies that help marginalized communities access opportunity. The second bullet point there, establish working relationships and practices with internal and external stakeholders, including community-based organizations, culturally-specific organizations, local and regional agencies, and private businesses. This is something that we've already been doing. This is something I've been working on quite a bit since I started in March of last year. So I meet regularly with land use and transportation, have looked for opportunities and continue to work with housing and public health. So there's a lot of that kind of internal work. I should mention OEICE can constant contact with them and have been have the fortunate opportunity to present at some of their community meetings as well. So this work will continue internally and also externally with partners. We have regional partners, local cities, and community groups as well. The third priority, build relationships and seek partnership opportunities. The first bullet there, explore community engagement options to foster collaborative working relationships and community and business stakeholders. So one effort that we're working on right now is bringing together CBOs to have a conversation about economic development at Washington County. So we're bringing together a group and it's we're inviting anyone that wants to participate from from Washington County, any any organization that represents business and workers to participate to think about how we can make sure that community voices are involved and at the table when we think about economic policy and programs. And the last bullet point there, seek partnership opportunities with local cities and regional partners, community-based organizations, and industry groups to advance shared economic development goals. This is talking more about that seeking external resources and working together with our partners to make sure that we can get at shared challenges and we can bring external resources into Washington County for economic development. Next slide, please. Next steps. So this slide I've put together to to let you know or propose how I can come back to your board and continue to to report and and engage with you all about this important work. So I'll talk about semi-annual written updates to the board and progress of work plan priority actions. So how might we we come back and have a discussion and seek direction from you all about the work that we're moving forward? I propose that we do this semi-annually, come back and we continue the conversation, continue to track the work as it goes forward. And then, starting at the end of this year and at the beginning of next year, build towards a twenty-twenty-three work plan. So continuing to track how we're moving, I'm going to knock on wood here, if that's not wood. Continue to track how we're moving out of the pandemic, how our priorities are shifting as we move into the long tail of recovery and what that might mean for the actions that we take on in twenty-twenty-three and beyond. Next slide, please. And this is this is the landing plate page slide here, Chair Harrington and your board. So again, these are the questions that that I had for you all is the the high-level questions. Are we focused on the right challenges? Do we have the right priorities to address those challenges? And are are the work plan action items that we have listed there aligned with your expectations? And then also, what are we missing? What did we miss here? So with that, I will, Chair Harrington, I'll turn it back to you and open it up for discussion. Thank you.
Yes, and let's leave that slide up through the course of this discussion if we can. Yes, Commissioner Treese, you'd like to kick off our discussion. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and and thank you, Matt. What a great presentation. And I I I'd just like to turn back the clock for all of us for just a moment and extend my appreciation frankly to Commissioner Willie. Because Commissioner Willie, you early on were very interested in in creating an economic development position and you did a good job here. So so that's 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 really, that's that's great news. Matt, the question I have is it might be down in the weeds a bit here, so I apologize if that's the case. If we could go back to slide nine. The one of the one of the obstacles, the barriers that we found early on in the CARES dollar distribution that when we were working with the businesses is that we 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 didn't have a good tracking system for the businesses in unincorporated Washington County. We didn't have business licenses, that type of thing. And I I don't see that specifically reflected here. I assume it's under building a strong organizational foundation. But could you talk a little more because that's frankly one of the things that, you know, made it difficult for us to do some of the work that you have listed here.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Treese. Terrific question. And you can find the answer to that question in the the first bullet point under build a strong organizational foundation there. So that economic data and business business data study is is directly related to and comes from some of the the conversations that I've had with you all and heard about from folks that were that were working so hard on the CARES Act dollars and getting that out to community and the challenges that were presented with, well, how do we know whose businesses are? How do we reach out to them? So I see this study being opportunity to to do that, to have that conversation about how might we put together a system so we can better understand who the businesses are across Washington County and especially in areas that are outside of city boundaries because a lot of our cities do have business license or other ways to track businesses. This is also a really important point, Commissioner Treese, that you're bringing up because there are a lot of at-home businesses or non-traditional businesses. And if you walk down a street, you'll say, well, here's a storefront, here's a storefront, here's a storefront, not realizing that behind some of those businesses or elsewhere in the county, there are there are plentiful other businesses, people that work from home or people that work non-traditional, non-traditional jobs as economists call it. And so we we look for, and I would be hopeful that through a study like this, we could think about and be presented with some options about how we might track businesses and how we might track economic data. we might track economic data and performance here across the county.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. And, and I assume that that's where it was.
The thoughtful frameworks and structures so that we can be clear about what our goals are and tracking those dollars. It does take time, as Commissioner Rogers was highlighting earlier, in being uncomfortable about the amount of time that the Work Systems Inc. agency that where he serves as our county representative is spending on their finances. That's because these are unprecedented levels of funding and they are public dollars and we are required to be open and transparent and thoughtful about those investments being made. I love the idea of the semi-annual reviews because we have to make sure that the transition from the traditional to this equitable economic development takes hold. It is not a foregone conclusion, right? The pull to traditional models is very real. So I think that semi-annual basis will help us all ensure that we are continuing to address the community needs. Another example that goes to show the progress are the results of our procurement changes, right? And better supporting those local firms, those firms that are COVID firms, minority women in emerging small business and service disabled veterans. It's all related to equity. So, Matt, I don't know if you could tell through my energy while you were presenting and the smiles. Thank you so much. Your investment, your patience and that of the team really, really shows. I'm so very excited on behalf of our community. Just keep going. It is great work.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I really appreciate those kind words and thank you all, board members, for your time this morning.
Ms. Angie, is there anything to close? I know you've been quite involved with this as well.
No, I appreciate the board's discussion and I can update the board on the precinct map. Actually, our ANT department has been actively working on that and I believe those maps should be completed by Thursday or Friday this week.
So across, so is coming up with this level of detail something that is done on a per-county basis as a result of the, the legislative apportionment that was done at the state?
Correct, yes.
Okay, terrific. Well, thank you to our agency staff through assessment and taxation, which is where department, which is where elections resides for following through on that detail. Thanks, Matt. Alrighty, let's see. It's not quite 10 o'clock. Would we like to take a break now per the agenda topic wise? Or do we want to take our next topic and then take a break? I'm ready to just keep going and then break after the next topic, but it would be an hour. Okay.
Yeah, I think that would, that would, again selfishly, that would help me facilitate my exit and coming back as if we could get things finished up on a timely fashion. So I would only miss a little bit this afternoon. So thank you for that, Chair.
Ms. Angie, how does that work for staff?
I just need to get the staff who are presenting on because they are not currently on as attendees, so I do need a few minutes.
Well, Commissioner Willie, I don't think it's going to affect your lunchtime departure. So why don't we take a 10-minute break now or 15-minute break now, excuse me? And then we will reconvene at 9:55? Yes, 9:55, okay?
Yes, that would be helpful.
Okay, great. We'll see you back here then.
Thanks for your flexibility, housing team.
Thank you, Tanya. Happy to be here.
Estimating how long we're going to need for board discussion on topics and then how that will affect the scheduling during the course of a meeting is quite an art. So your flexibility and nimbleness in all of the work that you do is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just so excited to hear your presentation. Boy, the things you all have accomplished in three short years. Just amazing.
Thank you, Chair.
Well, welcome back, commissioners and to our staff as well. See, I think we're just giving Commissioner Rogers another moment here. There we go. Now we've got our full complement. So let's get right to it. Our next topic, Affordable Housing Bond and Supportive Housing Services Joint Quarterly Update. Take it away, Director Comey Colivar.
Good morning, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Comey Calabro, Housing Director. Together with the housing team, we are very excited and pleased to share with you our joint report for Affordable Housing Bond and the SHS. We also have as part of these reports, the annual report. As you can see, these have been major accomplishments that we are all excited about. This is just a tip of the iceberg. There's lots of staff in our department and other departments working behind the scenes to make all of this possible. So in the last four years, I've been very active for housing with a bond and then the supported housing services levy. Before I hand over to Shannon, I'd like to quickly acknowledge the Board of Commissioners, our community partners, County Administrative Office, Tanya and Marnie, Mira, Simantel with HHS, Public Affairs Philip and Emily Roots, Melissa Sonzala in Housing, and also County Council Brad Anderson and Jackie Sato. But our major thanks go to you, the Board, for your leadership and support over this major work. As you can see, we have 10 housing projects under development. One of them just opened for lease up and Shannon would give you more details. On the SHS side, we have winter shelter programs. We have about 100 people who have assessed permanent housing through our long-term, regional long-term rental assistance, or ALA, as we call it, and then around two units of bridge shelter. So lots of progress. And without further ado, I'd like to hand you over to Shannon Wilson, Housing Development Manager, to walk you through the housing development bond. Then Shannon, hand over to Josh Kreitz and Jess Larson to walk you through the SHS piece. So take it away, Shannon.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you. As Comey said, my name is Shannon Wilson, Housing Development Manager, and I'll provide the Affordable Housing Bond update portion of this presentation. Next slide, please. And so this slide just gives you a snapshot of the cover of the report that Comey was mentioning, the overall Department of Housing Services report and a link to that report in the PowerPoint. Next slide, please. And this is our broad agenda. So I'll be giving the update on affordable housing bond and then Josh and Jess on supportive housing. And then we look forward to your questions and feedback. Next slide, please. And so quickly, just to center us all in the Affordable Housing Bond was approved in 2018. The IGA was approved in late 2019. And there you see the total award for Washington County, which includes the three implementing jurisdictions within the county, which are the cities of Beaverton, Hillsborough, and Washington County. So total allocation of 188.26 million. And with that allocation came a unit production goal of 1,316 units in the county as a whole. And then for the county's implementation area, which the bulk of this update is about, that goal is 814 units. Next slide, please. And so first I wanted to highlight the projects completed and under construction as of the end of 2021. This report, although it is a quarterly update because it is time for our annual report to be due to Metro, this is a brief overview of that 2021 progress report and the full report is in your packet as well. So the first project, as Comey mentioned, that was completed is Viewfinder. It is an 81-unit project in Tigard, sponsored by Community Development Partners. It's also a partnership with the Housing Authority. And so the image on your left is the building as it is nearly complete. You can see just a couple of just a little bit older photos. There's still a couple of work trucks there. But then on the right, you can see a couple images of some of the many pieces of local art that are featured in this building. So there are three local artists that were commissioned to provide art within the building. And so it was just to give you a sample of some of that art. And as this was a county's Phase One Metro Bond project and the first one completed in our implementation area, it was also the first opportunity for us to align the Affordable Housing Bond with the work of the Supportive Housing Services team. And so in this project, we're able to work with community development partners and their service partner, the Good Neighbor Center. And so there are 27 units of permanent supportive housing in this building that are supported with the housing provided with the bond and then the funds for the supportive services and rental assistance through the Supportive Housing Services measure. Next slide, please. And one of the projects under construction is the Valfree at Avenue to 26. This is a 30-1600 project in Forest Grove. It began construction in July of 2021. And this is a turnkey project. So DCM Communities is the developer and then the long-term owner and operator is the Housing Authority. We are also partnering with Bienna Star and Sequoia Mental Health. So both in the lease-up and marketing stage of the project as well as in the services, so resident services and supportive services. There will be eight permanent supportive housing units at this site. Next slide, please. Oh, I see there is a question, Chair.
Back on that prior slide with the Valfree, could you please, you used a phrase, you said it was a turnkey project. That, as far as I know, it's not a project-turnkey project. I don't know that I understand that term of art.
Oh, right. Yes, good question. Thank you, Chair. So Project Turnkey is a state program that provided funding to purchase, to acquire property last year for the use of for COVID respite and recovery from wildfires. I'm sure Josh and Comey know more about that. But in terms of the term turnkey itself, it's when a developer is, when there's a developer of a project who does all the work to assemble the financing and works with the contractor and the development team to get it built. And then once it's built, they kind of basically turn the keys over to another partner who is then the long-term owner and operator. So it literally is handing over of the ownership. Thank you. Next slide, please. Another project under construction is Terrace Glen. This is 144 units in Tigard, just across the street from Washington Square Mall and the Washington Square Transit Center. It is sponsored by Related Northwest in partnership with the Housing Authority. So it began construction in November, late November, but just had a groundbreaking just last month. Next slide, please. And then the Aloha Inn project began construction or began renovation work in December of 2021. This is the county's first all PSH project. So we'll provide 54 units in a converted motel. And a lot of the renovation work is fire and life safety as well as adding kitchenettes. And then, as you can see in the image on the left, a lot of demo work as well. There is replacement of some bathroom fixtures as well on kind of an as-needed, as-needed basis. So we're excited that that project especially is under construction as it'll be a great benefit and a great alignment again between the Affordable Housing Bond and Supportive Housing Services work. Next slide, please. So there is a lot of additional detail in the 2021 progress report in your packet. So these two tables kind of summarize that detailed information around the county's work in achieving the goals that are in the local implementation strategy for the Affordable Housing Bond and then also with funds committed. And so this is similar information to what we've provided before because we do have the same 10 projects. It's just that we're now working those all through the pipeline and getting those under construction and underway. So you can see the goals on the left-hand side of the chart. And then as you work your way across, I think the column that has the percentage of goal completed or underway is kind of the easiest way to see the progress the county has made towards those goals. You can see that nearly all of them are complete or in the case of the permanent supportive housing units have been exceeded. And then the table on the bottom has the funds, so the total funds available to the county. Again, the county's implementation area and then the funds committed. So we've committed 85% of the funds, but we've achieved overall 99.8% of the unit production goal. So we are positioned to exceed our unit production goal. And you can see the note on the bottom, very bottom of your slide, or hopefully you can see it. We do intend to release a second NOFA, Notice of Funding Availability, for those remaining funds of the 17.39 million this summer. So more to come on that. Next slide, please. Another key goal in implementation of the Affordable Housing Bond program is an equitable contracting. And so in the county's local implementation strategy, there was a goal that each project achieve a 20% COVID firm contracting goal. So that means that 20% of the funds paid for construction are hard costs and then also for development costs, the soft costs in a project were paid to minority or women-owned firms or emerging small businesses, MWESB acronym. And so the Viewfinder, which is completed and then all the projects under construction that I just mentioned, those are all either meeting or exceeding that 20% goal. And in addition to that, we are also tracking workforce. So that's the hours, the demographics of who is actually onsite completing the work. And so there's a highlight specifically from the Valfreet Avenue to 26 project. So as of 12/31, so that was about six months of construction, 63% of the hours worked onsite were completed by people of color. So we don't have specific goals in our implementation strategy around workforce demographics, but that is information that we are collecting. And then another area that was not included in our implementation strategy, but has emerged over the past six to nine months, has been around climate resiliency. So in September of 2021, Metro had released a formal policy statement on air conditioning. And that statement really, it heavily encourages in-unit air conditioning for all affordable housing bond projects. And so all 10 of the county projects do have air conditioning onsite in the common areas. And so eight of those projects then do have the in-unit. So every apartment has their own air conditioner. And then the two additional projects are providing ports so residents can easily connect up portable air conditioning units. And Metro Council did recently approve additional funding for air conditioning and for cooling plans broadly. And so that will be coming to your Board sometime in the near future in the form of an amendment to the IGA. So more to come on that as well. Next slide, please. And two other areas of the 2021 progress report I wanted to highlight are community engagement and equitable lease-up. So community engagement has always been an important part of implementation of the Affordable Housing Bond program. We had our first phase of community engagement that helped us develop the local implementation strategy. And then we had the second phase of community engagement that has really been centered around connecting with communities of color through working with culturally specific organizations. And the feedback that has been received has really helped inform project design. So it's led to changes in each project, changes in the layout of project, changes in the community amenities that are provided onsite. And so we had some of those listening sessions in 2020 and then in 2021, we had three additional listening sessions and then followed that up with two online surveys. So one of the surveys was targeting multifamily, or about multifamily housing in general. And then the second survey was specific to senior housing, housing for older adults. And so there's detailed demographic information in your report about their respondents. It's on page 22 of the report. But overall, so 75% of the respondents for the multifamily survey were people of color and 84.6% of the respondents for the senior survey were people of color. And overall, for both the surveys, 67% of respondents were from households that are low income. So the surveys were translated into all the county's safe harbor languages and really worked with our community partners to get the word out about those surveys and the listening sessions as well. And then for the equitable lease-up component, that's really been a new area and something where the Viewfinder, again, is our Phase One and pilot project is a way we've been able to to really learn from and kind of test things out there. And so as a part of that process, we've met with all of our culturally specific partners. We met with Apoano and Bienna Star and the Somali Empowerment Circle and met with staff from those organizations. And first just to get feedback on how to best reach the different communities that they're working with. We really wanted to provide the information in a way that was easy to understand. Often, a lot of this language can, around lease-up and tax credit compliance can have a lot of jargon and be very challenging to translate even when it is provided in a different language. And so we've been really working with these partners and with the property management company to really produce some materials that can be easily translated and also easily understood about the lease-up process and about what individuals can expect when they go to a meeting with a property manager and what materials they should bring and that type of thing. So it's something that we're developing, that we've been working on with the Viewfinder and they've been great partners, both community development partners and their management company as well. And something we'll be continuing to work on as the other projects complete and go through their lease-up process as well. Next slide, please. And so just to finish my section of the report, I just wanted to highlight a couple of the things that are happening in this first quarter of 2022. So we have two projects that will close and begin construction before the end of March or they're planned to, they're working towards that. And they both just, it's just kind of a coincidence, they end up being both of the projects sponsored by Bridge Housing. But one of those is Goldcrest Apartments, 75 units in the South Cooper Mountain area of Beaverton. And then there is the Aloha Housing Project, 82 units near the intersection of TV Highway and 172nd. And so with that, I want to thank you for your time and I'm going to hand things over to Josh Kreitz, our Assistant Director. Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Well, good morning, Chair Harrington Board. Again, for the record, my name is Josh Kreitz. I'm the Assistant Director of the Housing Department. So I'm going to be brief this morning, but I just wanted to take a minute. Chair Harrington, at the beginning of this presentation, you said, you know, how busy the housing department's been for the last three years and boy have we. So I just want to take a minute and recognize how far we've come, I think, especially in the last year. You know, a year ago today, we barely had any staff at all working on SHS. We were working on local implementation plan. And, you know, but I think our community, I think this board, our department, our partners throughout the county, which are just amazing, had a vision for what this could absolutely be. And so as we sit here a year later with a second quarter report, you know, I'm happy to say that we're housing nearly 100 individuals already and Jess will get into the numbers. I don't want to steal the thunder. We have 18 different organizations under contract, many of them culturally specific organizations. New shelters have been created. We've expanded our winter shelter capacity. And this has all happened within a period of a year. That's just such a major, major like move, I think, has happened in this county. So we understand there's a lot of work to do. There's a lot of areas of bodies of work that we haven't started that we need to start. But we're proud of the progress that this team has made and will continue to make with the support from this board and our community. With that said, I'm going to turn over to Jess, who will now go through our quarter two report. And then we'll be happy to take any questions at the end.
Thank you, Josh. Good morning, Chair Harrington, members of the board. My name is Jess Larson. I use she and her pronouns. And I'm your Supportive Housing Services Program Manager and pleased to be with you today as Josh described with our second quarter update or our half-year mark in our first year of programmatic implementation. To begin this update, we thought it would be helpful perhaps to start with the story of one of our new workers in the community. So this is the story of Emma Burridge. She's on the left here, standing with her colleague Rosie from Rosie from Just Compassion, and they happen to be speaking with Congresswoman Bonamichi on a recent tour of the shelter that a few of you were on as well. Emma was just hired up this year for the winter shelter season. So she's working as a winter shelter worker at the Beaverton Community Center where they are operating. Just Compassion is operating a winter shelter. And she says she's had many years working with nonprofits. But now that she is in this work of direct service with individuals experiencing homelessness, she experiences the work to be transformative. That was her word. And she shared with us a story of a gentleman she worked with and rolling him into their program once it opened in November. And how she noted how sullen he was. He couldn't make eye contact with her. His energy was very low. And she went through all the questions, got him all the information, completed the full enrollment process and then walked him over to where he'd be sleeping, his spot in the shelter for the winter and his affect, she said, immediately changed. He suddenly understood that he was going to have a safe, dry place to sleep every night this winter because of the winter shelter. And from there, she's begun building a relationship with him. He's gotten full-time work, which he gets to every day. Well-fed and, you know, showered and ready for the day from the shelter. And he's saving up his paychecks to move into his new apartment before winter shelter closes this season. Work that Emma is helping him to navigate so that he can find and secure that housing placement. So hopefully this story helps you, helps bridge kind of the pieces of the system and all of the parts of the work of transitioning, transforming, working from homelessness to engagement and relationship building, navigating the hurdles that create homelessness and perpetuate homelessness and ultimately securing permanent housing for the folks we serve. And in the presentation today, we're going to go through those various bodies of work and share with you our updates from the programs on the ground. And Emma's story is a good representation of all of that, I think. Next slide, please. So when we think of our system of care, we generally think of it in these three areas of work or bodies of programming. We have the Shelter and Outreach Programs. That's where Emma is working and meeting people where they're at in the system or in their, in their own homelessness and helping to build those relationships to begin the hard work of overcoming barriers and securing stable housing and the other wraparound supports they might need. And that is the second area of work, our case management and wraparound services. Those are the folks who understand how to navigate the system, who connect people to those long-term services and supports they need to overcome the barriers or regain stability in their life and certainly secure housing. And then the third area of work is our Rent, Housing and Rent Assistance Programs. These programs often work behind the scenes. They are the financial tools that make housing affordable for the people we serve. And there are many different kinds of housing rent assistance programs we need because every household we're working with requires different financial assistance for different periods of time. And we work to tailor those, those rent assistance programs to meet the needs of the households we're serving. So we're going to go through these three areas of work today in our specific programs. But this is generally how we build an entire system of care responding to homelessness. So it's also done in coordination with our continuum of care programs and our partners at Community Action and all the other funding sources we have. Next slide, please. Also working in the background is our Coordinated Entry System. This is Community Connect. And that is the tool that the case managers and the workers of the system use to navigate all of those services, making sure people get from point A to point B successfully. And all of our work results in stable housing. So that is the tool behind the scenes, bringing this system together. Next slide. Okay, so we're going to start with our Shelter and Outreach Program Updates. Some of the highlights have been mentioned already that our Winter Shelter Program is off and running, providing one hundred and eighty-seven extra beds of shelter this winter. We're actually working to expand that even further in the second quarter just to better meet the need in our community right now. We also launched an inclement weather shelter program to ensure no turnaway capacity during inclement weather events. Severe weather in the winter, for example, we had a nine-day holiday storm, you may recall, during which we opened up two additional locations and served a total of additional eighty-eight people who were otherwise unsheltered to just provide life-saving sheltering services during those events. And we're going to make sure that this extra inclement weather capacity is available year-round so we can anticipate weather events such as summer heat waves and smoke from fire, from forest fires, et cetera. And then you're well familiar with our Bridge Shelter Program. We still have one hundred and two beds in operation in the three different programs. So that is our, the current work underway in our sheltering program. Next slide demonstrates what's coming next. So we will, we are actually currently working on responding to a couple different COVID outbreaks. It seems that these situations have stabilized, but we've learned a lot about how to work and coordinate together across service providers, across shelters to ensure people had a safe place to recover or to isolate during the spread of Omicron. And also to make, making sure we had enough staff coverage. Because some, many staff, we were down some staffing in our shelters. So it was a great test of our coordination and will continue to be improving upon that as we continue to navigate COVID in our congregate shelters and just our general outreach work. As Shannon was mentioning in her presentation, we're also getting ready to transition our shelter program at the Aloha Inn to a PSH program, Permanent Supportive Housing. So some of the guests who are staying there will be transitioning hopefully into housing or other shelter capacity as needed. And then you're well aware of, since our December meeting with you, that we're getting ready to launch an expansive community engagement series to begin the conversation with our community about how we go about expanding our shelter capacity in Washington County to provide year-round shelter capacity. It doesn't, it's not ideal to have to start and stop a shelter program every winter season. What we aim for is year-round shelter capacity, but in order to do that, we need to have permanently located shelter programs. And in order to do that, we are beginning with a big conversation with our community so we can co-create community guidelines for those future shelter programs. So that's our body of sheltering work underway and in the near future. The next slide gives you a quick snapshot of that capacity. Before the SHS funding was available, we had forty-four year-round shelter beds in Washington County. With the addition of SHS funding, we are able to fund the additional one hundred and two shelter, with Bridge Shelter Programs, which are operating as year-round right now. And then additionally, we put them separate here because it's just winter. But the one hundred and eighty-seven beds that are under, in operation right now. But as you know, we're working towards a year-round goal of additional two hundred and fifty, which would give us a systems-wide goal of having almost three hundred year-round shelter beds. So that's what we're aiming towards. All right, we're moving along. I'll continue on with these updates into the Case Management and Wraparound Support Services Updates. So as Josh mentioned, we've hired up eighteen of the thirty-eight case managers so far. And when I say we, I mean our community-based service providers. They are still hiring. The thirty-eight represents the current contracting capacity that our eighteen organizations have. So they're about halfway in hiring and training those workers. And those eighteen staff are the case managers, boots on the ground right now, working with individuals, getting them enrolled in the programs, looking for housing, getting them ready to move into their future permanent housing with the Arla vouchers. So that work is well underway, but we're about halfway in building that capacity this year. We've also launched a cohort to support our culturally specific organizations. We invested in some capacity building for those organizations right away, but we also wanted to provide an ongoing learning space and support space to further understand how we can support the capacity building of our culturally specific organizations so that we can build out a broader system of culturally specific services in Washington County. Next slide. Here we have what's coming next. We have some really exciting pilots that we're going to launch in the second half of the year. These pilots represent a lot of research with our community partners, understanding where the gaps are in the system and how we can leverage the, leverage other capacity and also plan ahead to build out capacity. So first is a new program, a pilot program, we're calling Housing System Navigators. These are going to be housing, housing systems experts trained and supported by some of our housing partner organizations, but embedded in various health and human services case management teams. So there will be five that we start with, Hawthorne Walk-In Center Development Disabilities, Developmental Disabilities, Behavioral Health Intensive Care Coordination Program, Disability Aging and Veterans Services, or the DAVE's Program, and Maternal Child and Family Health Program. And these five case management programs in HHS will, will work with a new housing systems navigator to figure out how to provide for the housing needs of the clients or participants that they're already serving. So we're leveraging those relationships, those supports already in place so that they don't have to be re-enrolled in a new system of care. We can rely on the system of care that it currently exists, but bring into that system the, the expertise of our housing system and help connect people to those housing resources quickly. The second pilot we'll be launching in the second half of the year is Supportive Employment to build out our housing workforce. As you know, as we're hearing from all of our community partners, hiring is hard right now. There are a lot of vacancies and there are a lot of new positions we need to fill. And in fact, it turns out when it comes to shelter workers and caseworkers and housing navigators, sometimes the people who are best equipped and skilled for these roles are people who've lived this experience themselves. People who've experienced housing instability or homelessness. And so this Supportive Employment Program will build, provide training and support to prepare people who've had lived experience to get jobs in housing programs as caseworkers of our expanded system. They will get the training and the Supportive Employment coaching kind of work. And then they'll also get an internship in one of our service provider organizations where they can get on-the-ground experience before they launch into their future career. So this both builds out expertise for people who've lived experience, provide good-paying jobs, but also helps us meet our workforce needs as we grow this system. Okay, next slide, please. So this little table provides you just a quick snapshot of how we're building that capacity or where we're at in that capacity right now. So before we had the SHS funding, there were about nine funded caseworkers, housing caseworkers specifically in Washington County. We've added eighteen and we're going to be aiming for that full thirty-eight by the end of the year. So by the end of this year, we expect to have fifty-one boots on the ground, helping people navigate their housing needs and find secure and permanent housing. All right. And then the last segment of my updates for you today move into our Rent Assistance Programs. So as has been mentioned, so far ninety households has been, have been fully leased up in our Arla Program, the Regional Long-Term Rent Assistance Program. We have a goal of five hundred this year, so we are not halfway in this halfway mark. But that is, has a lot to do with the amount of capacity building we've had to do in the first six months to get ready, to get our caseworkers trained up, hired and trained up, so that they can begin this work of housing. So we expect to see this number grow quite rapidly in the coming months and we'll bring you another update on that in our third quarter. We also had nineteen households whose rent was protected, or sorry, pardon me, their housing was protected with one-time rent assistance. Because of the limitations of the emergency rent assistance funds, we wanted to provide more flexible one-time assistance for especially culturally specific organizations. And that program became a model for us that we'll be building off of and launching in the coming year. And I think that's on my next slide. Next slide, please. Thank you. So what's next ahead in our Housing and Rent Assistance Programs? Again, the Aloha Inn. So we'll be transitioning that program to fifty-four permanent supportive housing homes for people in our community. That it'll be opening in a phased approach, so we hope to have one half of the building opened as PSH early summer and then the other half later this summer. And then we're also planning for the expansion of two different rent assistance programs. In addition to Arla, the Long-Term Rent Assistance Program, we'll also be providing Rapid Resolution, a one-time eviction prevention or homelessness resolution program and a rent assistance program. And then also a program called Rapid Rehousing, which generally tends to be a little more temporary. Two months to twenty-four months of rent assistance offered, often tapering down as a household's financial stability strengthens over the course of the program. But these programs tend to serve people who don't need that long-term rent assistance tool. They either have a different rent assistance tool and they're having a one-time situation that puts their housing at risk. Or they are working household who can afford the rent on an ongoing basis, but need help getting stabilized first. So these additional rent assistance programs will give our housing caseworkers many tools to work with to better meet the needs, the variety of needs they face in working with the community. Next slide, please. All right. And then this is just a quick snapshot of some of our supportive housing capacity, not some of our supportive housing capacity underway right now. So before the Supportive Housing Services Measure Program launched, we had just under five hundred PSH placements. Those would be programs like VASH for veterans or Shelter Plus Care and otherwise. With the first year of our program, we've been able to add a capacity for an additional five hundred. So we're almost, we have a system now that's almost doubled in one year. But that's not the end of our growth in supportive housing. We're anticipating a commitment, we've made a commitment to add sixteen hundred and sixty-five when this program is at full capacity. And so we will be able to sustain a system of supportive housing with more than about twenty-two hundred supportive housing units. So that really demonstrates the amount of growth underway right now in our county for supportive housing. And in closing, just a quick view of our overall year-one goals. Next slide, please. So we made three primary goals for this first year of our program. Creating supportive housing, helping stabilize other households who don't need supportive housing, but need some kind of other intervention to establish housing stability and then expanding our year-round shelter capacity. We've nearly created that capacity in our first, for our first goal of supportive housing, but we haven't filled that capacity. So we've got a lot of work to do to house folks in that new capacity that's been created. Next quarter, we'll be focusing on that Population B focus. The Rapid Rehousing and Rapid Resolution Rent Assistance Tools will build out our capacity for our second goal and we expect to see those outcomes significantly increase. And then, as you have heard, we are on track with our year-round shelter goal, though it is important to note that all of our Bridge Shelter Programs will likely be transitioned to future permanent housing programs. So these are not year-round shelters that we will be able to sustain permanently. And we'll have to, that is the importance of doing our community engagement to find those year-round sites for sheltering.
Yes, I just wanted to jump in and piggyback off something you said on Population B, which is, we should also remember how much money has come into the system for folks who are at risk of losing their housing or eviction in the last year, state money, federal money. And so a lot of that money has come into the system to help a lot of folks who would have been at risk of falling into homelessness if it weren't for the assistance. So that's one thing I just want to mention. I mean, tens of millions have come into Washington County there.
Thank you, Josh. That's a helpful point of context. And that's why we did not focus on our Population B Programs to start with and why we focused on Population A. But we're getting there. All right, next slide. And I think our last slide. So we turn it back to you, Chair and Board of Commissioners. What questions and direction do you have for our team working on the Affordable Housing Bond and the Supportive Housing Services Programs? And do you support our submission of the two reports to Metro, the Affordable Housing Bond Annual Report and the Supportive Housing Services Quarterly Report? Thank you.
Thank you, team. Just amazing accomplishments in such a short period of time. Really demonstrates your Really demonstrates your expertise in this domain, your passion and commitment. So thank you for taking on these ambitious goals. I know when each of these funding measures were defined, we were a little bit concerned. We knew we could do good work. We knew the need was great, but we wanted to make sure, given the voter-approved funding, that we would be successful at delivering. And with what you've presented today, the answer is a resounding yes. So commissioners, what questions and comments do you have? Particularly for the two questions that staff has asked of us today? Anything? Or just give a thumbs up if you're all set. Go ahead, Commissioner Trese and Vice Chair Willie.
Well, first of all, congratulations and, and thank you for all of your hard work. And I definitely support the submission of the annual report and the quarterly report. I just want to get up that piece. And one question I have is, is given what we've been through in, in the past year, are there anything, what are the biggest lessons learned that you've experienced? Kind of the ahas, the, the, you know, the changes in philosophy or direction or anything like that? I'm just curious what, what your experiences have been. And I'd, I'd ask each one of you that question.
Well, I, I could kick us off and say, I, I think learning to be flexible and, and adaptable in the environments that we've worked in, right? I mean, I think we, we have all these goals on both of these major bond programs. And just being able to, to scale up quickly, meet the needs of the community, change when necessary. Listen, if shelters are a big thing, like inclement shelters, all of a sudden we have a big winter storm, then we need to surge into that area, right, and pull back a little bit. And I think the, the expectations on us as a county and as a department are huge right now. And so just understanding, you know, where we can make the greatest impact and understanding where we might need to wait a few months to move on other areas have been just one of the, the greatest learnings. Again, the Housing Department had a budget of forty million, you know, a couple of years ago, when Comey and I were looking at, and now we're up to a hundred and thirty million. So it's just flexibility and understanding how to scale.
Jess, what about you?
Oh, every day is a new learn, learning opportunity, it seems like. Right now, for me, Commissioner, I think it's not just us that's learning, it's our community-based partners and learning how to support and coach and teach really a new culture of, of how, of housing first. We talk about housing first a lot, but now we're putting housing first into practice because we have housing tools. And a lot of our system of response to homelessness has been based on the limited capacity we had to do outreach and talk to individuals, give them bus tickets, make sure they had access to a, a food pantry or something like that. But we didn't have solutions to homelessness. Now we have solutions to homelessness with housing. And now we're teaching and training and supporting our organizational partners in an entire cultural shift of creating, being, being the solvers of homelessness, not being the, the support to people, not just providing support to people experiencing homelessness, but providing that transformation to, to, to stable housing. It's, it's a big cultural shift and incredible opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I'd ask the same question of Shannon and Comey. I mean, you've both been around a while. What, I mean, did you expect that you'd be here at this point in time with, with these resources, with, you know, with the level of the issue that we're dealing with?
Great question, Commissioner Treese. Yeah, in terms of resources, no, we, we, well, the, when the Metro Bond passed, it was a big aha moment that like the community is willing to support this work. So that was a breath of fresh air. But we, we have learned to adapt with it. I think Washington County is actually the leader in implementing the, the Metro Affordable Housing Bond in terms of the numbers or what we've done in the time. But yes, the costs are going up. That's another lesson. Pandemic, pandemic and then supply chain. And, and also the workers, the builders have to be very cautious with the COVID protocols at work. So those are things we have to adapt to. And on the homelessness side, obviously, the challenge there is this is a population that has a lot of conditions, a lot of issues. And so we learned that it's a system, it's not everybody that can just get into housing and be successful. People need support. And so, and my last point is the dollars, you know, the cost is going up, not just to build a housing, to maintain and operate it, plus providing human services, which is, you know, counseling, mental health, all of those are not caused that the real estate can afford long-term. So those are my lessons.
Thank you. Shannon?
Thank you, Commissioner Treese. I would add the, around flexibility and also creativity. So in working with these developers, you know, we've seen a lot more of creative, creative ideas that this funding has brought. So in terms of, you know, engaging with culturally specific organizations, in terms of providing units affordable to extremely low-income households at that thirty percent median family income, that was a, you know, the goal that seemed the most challenging, you know, out of all the, you know, production goals. And so this funding and then the support, you know, from your board as well with the Housing Production Opportunity Fund, that's supported several of the projects that we have in the, in the pipeline. It's just really led to more creative solutions that I think provide better, housing the better needs, the better meets the needs of the community overall.
Thank you. Great report. And thanks for a little insight into, you know, your thoughts about what's happening. So I appreciate it. Vice Chair Willie?
Yeah, that's a great question, Pam. I, and I really appreciated the, the responses to that. It gives us a little bit of insight behind the curtain, so to speak, of what you guys are dealing with on a daily basis. And also, you know, the thing that I wrote down during your presentation was basically, you know, to use a cliche, we're building as, as we fly it. And you have been enduring that for the last year. These, this information you presented to us today really is a very strong message. It says you've been working hard and you've been successful, you had a vision, and you certainly have put that into place. So congratulations on that. And yes, I, I would support the submission of this. I know that we worked with all three counties, Multnomah and Clackamas, in the development of IGAs and these programs. Is there, is there a point in time when the, what worked, what didn't work? Do you give each other that kind of feedback? Or is everybody just kind of, I won't say flying solo, but, but trying to get their own job and their own work done?
Well, I, I can start off. I, I think across the entire department, we have a lot of touchpoints with our, our colleagues across the region. I know at the Housing Authority level, I meet with all the executive directors. Comey and I meet with the executive directors of all the housing authorities who are, you know, comparing notes, what's working, what's not working, what's happening industry-wide. I think on the SHS and homeless side, I know that Jess and her team work pretty prolifically with the other two counties and they're meeting weekly. That's not like a touch point that's happening. And Jess can speak more into detail of that, but they're meeting weekly and sometimes multiple times a week in different areas of the work to see what's working, what should we be visioning ahead. And, you know, and again, Comey can speak to us more, but Comey's our Director of the Statewide Housing Authorities of Oregon Association. So Comey's been leading the way on all those connect points. In fact, we have an all-day meeting tomorrow. So he's been leading the, the way on that area for us. So yeah, a lot of connect points across the, across the organization. Maybe Comey, I don't know if there's anything I missed there.
You covered it. Thank you, Josh.
Well, that, that's always good to hear because, you know, collaboration's always good. We don't all have to make the same mistakes. So one more quick question, and that is, I didn't see any information on the Econo Lodge, that Turnkey project. So was that supposed to be, would that be included in here typically? Or where would I get some more information on that? Just again, because it was obviously a difficult project and continues to be. I'd just like to have some informational update on that. I think I may have, if I look at my calendar, I may have a meeting with Jess or Josh or somebody to get that. So if I'm getting ahead of it, then just tell me to look at my calendar and I'll wait.
Thank you, Commissioner. The, the project Turnkey that purchased the Econo Lodge is our, in the SHS program. It's one of our three bridge shelter programs. So it was included here in the presentation. It's still under operations by Greater Good Northwest, operating sixty bridge shelter beds for folks who are medically vulnerable and working on permanent housing placements. And things are going very well there. There's an additional effort that has been launched, which you'll hear more about in your briefing, called the Calle Diaz Effort, led by our Chief Equity Officer, Latricia Tillman, to continue the work and conversation with our partners at Latino Policy Council around supporting the, the Business District on Tenth Avenue, also known as Calle Diaz.
Okay, all right. And then lastly, you probably didn't even know, but you had, you had a great picture of some workforce training there on slide number nine. You had a couple of volunteers, you were trying to teach how to put beds together. So I'm glad you didn't point them out. I'll point out Juan Carlos, Metro Counselor Juan Carlos, and then his assistant was, needed a lot of training, but it was fun. Thank you for giving us that offer. I'm done.
Commissioner Rogers, you're unmuted.
Sure. I will recognize that worker. I, I think he's on the camera right now and did a fine job. And always appreciate people who do that sort of charitable work. That's terrific. Comey, we've talked so many different times. I've always applauded you and I do again, and your staff and all the people associated. So I certainly would recommend that this be presented. I have no issue there. My question is and has been and always will be, I guess, how sustainable are we? Are we looking at the long run? I always, I can remember when I was a young man and got a first car and said, wow, that's wonderful. I wouldn't, I guess I wasn't so young because I didn't have any, yeah, out of college almost. But then I didn't think about, you know, we've got to maintain this thing. We've got to put gas in it. We've got to ensure it. We've got to do all of the things that are necessary. So with the advent of all of these additional units, are we doing financial planning for the future to say, geez, someday we'll have lots of units, but will we have the funding to maintain the infrastructure? Is that something your department is doing and continuing to do to make certain that we're not going to get caught with some delayed maintenance down the road? That's my question.
Thank, thank you for your kind words, Commissioner Rogers. Part of our financial modeling includes long-term sustainability. As you know, we'll be coming back to the board for approvals on our portfolio rehab, which is a result of, it's a hundred and seventeen million dollar transaction, forty-five million in rehab for our portfolio. And that's something we want to avoid in the future, which is deferred maintenance. The new thing, which nobody has a crystal ball is, and I mentioned that to, in my response to Commissioner Treese, is the cost, operating costs are going up and we don't have a very good way of estimating or controlling for that. But in terms of general maintenance, sustaining the portfolio, we think we have that planned well in our financial models. We had a flooding at the Aloha Inn. It wasn't a natural flood. I mean, I mean, I was there that evening. Us was Brad. And most likely it was human error of some sort. So those, those type of incidents we can't control for, we are hoping that with, with, with our financial plan and our model for rehab and also working with our colleagues in human services, behavioral health, we can give people the services they need to stay in housing long-term. But if your question is, do we have a way to control for human behavior in the future? That's a work in progress.
Comey, I said, not, you, you did a great job as normal. That, that wasn't my really question. I, as, as long as you have a financial plan, that's what's important.
We do have a financial plan. We do have a financial plan. Thank you.
That, that's the right question. And the answer I meant. Thanks.
Chair Hampton, I don't have any question. Great job, everyone. And I'm thumbs up for submitting these reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. I'll do sweet best, Chair. I first want to start with how proud I am of all of you and staff. I've already talked about those ambitious and audacious goals. You've really delivered and continued to do so. I remember one of the first meetings that I had around homelessness as Chair was right here in downtown Hillsborough with St. Matthew's Church and their food pantry and homeless services. Really bare bones, in their own words, bare-bones safety net services to help people stay alive. Not thrive, but stay alive. They'd been doing this work. Remember, this is pre-pandemic back in 2019. They originally started this work to help address food safety. But it expanded based on community needs and the, the growing number of homeless folks in downtown Hillsborough. But they'd been doing this work for over a decade with volunteers and through their own charity in their hearts. And they said to me, when are you in government going to stop relying upon us to do this heavy lifting? We're tired. We didn't intend to do this permanently. That was a key ingredient to motivate me to help shape the Supportive Housing Services Measure, in addition to all that I had learned as a Metro Counselor about affordable housing and homelessness in shaping that Affordable Housing Bond. Also, beginning in 2019, was an education process as a new member of this commission about the housing continuum. And how many times did Comey and Shannon have to step me through the housing continuum as well as with Annette Evans? Emergency housing, transitional housing, affordable, permanent affordable housing and workforce housing, let alone onward into the fuller housing spectrum with market rate housing and executive housing. You know, in that first year, the three of us as new commissioners were hearing a lot from our small but mighty housing team about how much work they were doing to seek additional grant monies through federal programs and state programs. It seemed like Annette was working a sixth day of each work week to work on those grant applications. So the voter-approved funding has made a world of difference. And you've highlighted for us how you've built an incredibly strong foundation, both to sustain those new affordable housing units and to put, build that strong foundation for the, the funding, the ten-year funding of the Supportive Housing Services Program, so that we end chronic homelessness and ensure that folks who are at risk of experiencing homelessness now will not become homeless. So we have net zero homelessness. Thank you so much. And keep going. We know there's, you've highlighted it here. Finishing the portfolio of Affordable Housing Bond programs, continuing to work with our partners on that as well as through the houselessness program. So thank you, thank you, thank you. You are awesome.
Yes, Commissioner Treese?
I, you know, I guess I forgot to ask the question I usually ask, which is how are we communicating these results? Will this go on horizons? You know, the, 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 the Will this go on horizons, you know, the 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 submission? Can we also make that more publicly available? I think that that's an important piece as well.
I could say, I think our comms team have been really helpful in getting this messaging out. I think I've seen, since I've come here, I've just seen the amount of positive press around our programs kind of going through the roof. So I think Philip and Emily have been doing a really good job. We'll get this out on the website. We'll get this shared internally and externally. And I would say the newsletters have been really well received. The original SHS and now the Housing Department newsletters have been really well received to get more information out there to the broader community. So that's a great question. We want to make sure folks understand all the work that's happening and all the successes we're having.
I can tell you that many of us reported this morning, or several of us reported this morning, that we had met with the new individual who's assigned to Washington County from Pamplin Media. And one of his requests was information around this program. And while we're, while we've been talking, I asked Megan to forward the the link to him. I should have realized that I could go through the your comms people as well. So my apologies, but I do think that we need to be talking about this, you know, in a broader sense. So thank you.
Commissioner Treese, we'll have Philip Bransford reach out to Pamplin.
And I forgot to say yes to your second question. So it's unanimous. We're all ready for you to move forward and submit the Affordable Housing Bond Annual Report and the SHS Quarterly Report to Metro. Terrific job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate your support.
Keep up the good work. And behind the scenes, our very own Ms. Angie has been working with our team to move topics around on the agenda to make highest and best use of our limited commissioner time. So next, we're going to move on to topic seven. Consider 2019 Metro Parks and Nature Bond Measure Local Share Investment Recommendations with Interim Assistant County Administrator Rachel Fuller, as well as the Parks Manager Carl Schweitzer. And also Ms. Angie, while they're coming on board, if you could also highlight the the new member of the team who will be joining on February fourteenth, that will have parks in her portfolio.
I will actually, I don't want to steal the thunder from interim County Administrator Rachel Fuller. So I'll let Rachel mention that.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm, yes, I'm very excited to announce that Laurel Brown will be joining the county on Monday, February fourteenth. Laurel comes to us most recently from Reed College and Portland State University, where she worked in the facilities divisions and managing multiple stakeholders. We're really excited to have her on board and to bring some stability to this division. And with that, thank you. My name is Rachel Fuller, and I serve as an interim assistant county administrator here at Washington County. And before I turn it over to Carl for the presentation, I want to share staff's understanding of the context within which we're having this conversation. And we really look forward to additional input and considerations from the board as we work through putting this new funding source to its highest and best use. So first, as you know, parks and recreational assets are owned and operated by multiple jurisdictions throughout Washington County. This presents opportunities for collaboration to achieve shared community goals. There are parks and recreation assets owned by Washington County that are in need of investment, and Metro Local Share could be one option for meeting these needs. There are also projects in the long-term capital pipeline for Washington County, specifically the campground at Hag Lake that are not currently funded. Also, the population of Washington County is growing and land is developing within the UGB, and this creates tensions as land for parks and open space becomes scarce and a precious commodity. And finally, the population of Washington County is diversifying, and there are opportunities to engage the community around recreational assets that meet the needs of our entire population. So with this context in mind, the purpose of this presentation is to review the allocation options for the Metro Local Share Bond Funds and to share some initial recommendations for your consideration. So with that brief introduction, I'll turn it over to Carl to make the presentation.
Carl, your audio is not working.
Okay, I think I fixed it. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for taking some time to talk with us about parks today. Thank you, Rachel, for that nice introduction. Next slide, please. So today, we're going to share with you some information for your consideration and also some recommendations. At the end of this presentation, we look forward to hearing your your discussions about the utilization of the local share funds and happy to be able to answer any questions that that you may have. Next slide, please. So today's agenda is to talk a little bit about context, share background information about the Metro Bond Measure and the local share components. Again, some contacts related to park provision in Washington County, share some recommendations, and then hear the board's considerations and to receive direction. Next slide, please. Okay, so these are some of the challenges that have been identified as we have talked through. Yeah, this is not the presentation that we had submitted for consideration. So bear with me if these slides are a little bit out of order and I speak to them a little more off the cuff. So.
Hang on a second. Hang on.
Thank you.
Is is it possible for the team to locate the presentation that you sent recently? Because I want to make sure you get the advantage of highest and best use of the board today.
I appreciate that.
Clerk Moss? Are you there?
A M, Madam Chair, we will look for this and get it momentarily.
Thank you. I know that, so I'll do the stall. I know that various commissioners have had the opportunity for briefings with our staff. And I know that the presentation has has improved, reflecting the improved proposal. And so I want to make sure that we and our public have the opportunity of that improved definition. And Carl, if you could remind me, I was up at Shehalen Ridge Nature Park this past Sunday afternoon. It was a beautiful day. And I remember as a metro counselor, the two thousand and six bond measure helped purchase that property. And we had about half of the fund, Metro had half of the funding available to build out that facility. And then there was a subsequent bond measure, I think it was twenty nineteen. Did I get that year right?
Yes, twenty nineteen, November of twenty nineteen.
Great, great. So that is another significant, large park that offers walking, hiking trails, mountain bike trails, as well as trails for horses. And I saw all three flavors in full display on Sunday. The parking lot was full. And it was just wonderful to see a new park that only opened in December to be so well-used already, which, you know, we have heard, those of us on the board, especially this past summer, as we heard, as our community endured a heat dome plus two subsequent heat waves, so three in total, Scoggins Hag Lake at Scoggins Park really became quite, quite popular for folks to find relief. So we've been able to locate that, or has our team been able to locate that presentation yet?
Thank you for the stall, Chair Harrington. These are the times when we're not all in the same room that we're trying to figure out the teams and text. Right now, Clerk Moss and team are working to pull it from the packet because that is the accurate presentation. And we don't want to do a share screen because it changes the viewer's.
Experience.
Experience. Yep, thank you. So just give us just a couple more minutes.
Great, great.
Yeah, so Chair Harrington, thank you for sharing that. Metro uses its bond measure dollars to provide a variety of projects. Many of them are in-house projects. And the Shehalen Ridge project was was one of their large projects out of the two thousand and six bond measure. And it is, it is phenomenal. It is a wonderful place with great amenities. And I would very much encourage everybody who hasn't had a chance to see it yet to to see that. It really adds a new recreation opportunity for Western Washington County. It's a nice complement to the Wapato National Wildlife Refuge. And of course, Scoggins Valley Park, home of Henry Hag Lake.
I haven't had a chance to be, to visit Newell Creek Canyon Nature Park since it opened as well within the last six months. That too provides walking trails and mountain bike trails as well. It's just on the edge of Oregon City. So that's another exciting regional park. And it reminds me that a lot of this, when I was a metro counselor, Carl mentioned that we don't have, or the materials mentioned, we don't have a master plan for Washington County parks. When I was a metro counselor, there wasn't a master plan for Metro parks either. But they developed a framework that is clear about how local park district, city, and county parks fit into the park continuum. So that's something for us to draw from. Okay, looks like we have the right presentation, Carl. So I'll stop my boring stall tactics and turn it back over to you. Thank you for enduring me, folks.
Thank you. That was excellent vamping. So jumping right in, so we talked about today's purpose and are looking forward to having discussion and getting your direction on how we move forward with local share. So here's a little bit of context. So this is an image that shows where part providers are located in Washington County. Most of the urbanized, most of the urbanized incorporated areas of the county have a park services provider. So if you live in a city or a special district like Toaltown Hills Park and Recreation District, you have a park services provider. There are some areas of urbanized unincorporated county that do not have a park services provider, and those are shown in white on this map. So inside of the black urban growth boundary line, the areas that are identified as white here are areas that are in unincorporated urbanized Washington County and do not have a park services provider. There are about fifty-five thousand people that live in these areas. These areas may be in the in a city's future planning area, but are not likely to receive park services until such a time that they're brought into a city or special district boundary. And there's no certainty on when that might occur. It could be a couple of years. It potentially could be decades where these unincorporated areas exist without a park services provider. Of course, residents who live in these areas might take advantage of parks, both regional parks and other neighborhood-type parks that are located outside of their immediate neighborhoods, but exist otherwise in the in the county. But we don't really have a good sense of of that. There's a gap in our data understanding how people use parks in an area that doesn't have a park services provider. And also on this map, you can see Washington County's three actively managed parks. Mesker Park is a neighborhood park, and that is located over on the east side of the county by Washington Square. And then Eagle Landing Park and Scoggins Valley Park have a more regional, or a more regional-type project, regional-type park. And Eagle Landing Park is located near the community of Shoals off on Rainbow Lane. And of course, Scoggins Valley Park is located south of Forest Grove near the city of Gaston. Next slide, please. Little bit more information about Washington County's managed parks. So we manage twenty-five hundred acres of parkland, mentioned Eagle Landing Park, Scoggins Valley Park, and Mesker Park. In twenty twenty, Scoggins Valley Park received about one point one two five million visitors. That's, that's a lot of visitors. There's a lot of demand for this park. There's, there's no other a public water body in Washington County. And so on a hot summer day, we get lots of people looking to come out and cool off. Interesting to note that the attendance that year was about twice the attendance of our, of Oregon's one national park, and that's Crater Lake National Park. We have about seventeen staff, including seasonals, and we have about a two million dollar operating budget per year. Next slide, please. So, so here's a little bit of information about the the four hundred and seventy-five million dollar Metro Parks and Nature Bond Measure. Why did the voters vote for this? The voters voted for this to protect natural areas and provide more park and recreation, recreation opportunities for the tri-county metropolitan area. It passed in November of twenty nineteen with sixty-six percent support, so very popular and consistent with other Metro Park and Nature Bond Measures. And it was renewed at nineteen cents per thousand of assessed value. The goals of the bond measure are to continue community engagement, advance racial equity in the provision of parks and park services, and improve climate resilience across the program's projects. There are a number of criteria that the projects funded by local share dollars must meet, and a couple of them that I think are really essential to all of the projects. Certainly, the projects we'll be talking about later today are that to ensure parks are welcoming and improve access to nature and provide culturally responsive public improvements. We want to provide opportunities where none exist or to improve the the facilities that exist across the tri-county region through these bond measure dollars, so that people have more recreation opportunities. Next slide, please. So here's the bond measure distribution. As I mentioned, it's a four hundred and seventy-five million dollar bond measure. It is broken into six different pots. There, the one hundred and fifty-five million dollars for the land purchase that Metro will do, ninety-eight million dollars for improvements to Metro-owned properties, forty million dollars for Metro's Nature in the Neighborhood Grant Projects, forty million dollars for walking and biking trails, fifty million dollars for complex community projects, and ninety-two million dollars for local share parks and nature projects. So on the right side of this slide, you see a breakout of of what that ninety-two million dollars in local share looks like in Washington County. So outside of Washington County includes, of course, Clackamas County, the cities in Clackamas County, cities in Multnomah County. The Wash, all of the cities in Washington County will receive their own share of the, from the local share, ninety-two million dollars, including Washington County. And the Washington County piece of this is for people who live in unincorporated urbanized Washington County. Those are the people who are paying for this bond measure and presumably would be the beneficiaries of the projects that are produced because of them. Next slide, please. Okay, so there's a variety of allocation options for your consideration. We have thought through these and had multiple conversations internally and with partners about these options. The the first option would be. The, the first option would be to distribute to cities and other park providers. That is a way that the, that previous boards have, have utilized these in the past. The, the advantage to that might be that in distrib, in distributing those to cities would be that they may be able to leverage those funds for their local priorities. They might have more resources available to implement this program. The, a couple of moments for pause for us would be that if, if we were to provide these funds to one of the cities, they may not be able to provide these additional park services to unincorporated areas. And of course, if, if the resources were given to another city or special district, we would not invest those dollars potentially in our local county park needs. Another opportunity would be to engage the community. As Chair Harrington mentioned, Washington County does not have a parks master plan. A parks master plan is a document that guides policy decisions, funding opportunities and targeted investment strategies. One option would be to start fresh and engage the community to determine the utilization of these $3.2 million funds with a, with a blank canvas. The, one of the bigger concerns about that though is if it was specifically for that, that 3.2, the discussion specific to that 3.2 million dollars, it may set expectations that we can't meet. $3.2 million for me personally is a lot of money, but when it comes to developing park properties, it, it, it won't go that far. And then another consideration is to, to use this funding to meet current Washington County park needs. We have local control of the outcomes. We address existing county park needs. We could co-design these, these facilities or co-design these the, a, a, a plan with the community and our county staff and really have the opportunity to focus on engagement and equality. We have a real cool, cool opportunity to be part of this regional tapestry of parks. We, we, there are parks of a variety of types all over the tri-county area. There is a really wonderful campground on the east side of Multnomah County at Oxbow Regional Park. We don't have a corresponding campground-like facility in Washington County. If we were to pursue that option, it really bookends the metropolitan area with these really too high quality camping facilities. So that's an exciting opportunity. And then we also, the Eagle Landing Park that we're going to talk a little bit about as we, as we move forward is part of a multi-jurisdiction, it's a pearl in the multi-jurisdictional necklace of Toaltown River Access Facility. So it's a way for us to be a good partner with, with other agencies as we develop the Toaltown River Water Trail. The other benefit of using these funds to meet our current Washington County parks needs would be to leverage existing funding. We'll talk a little bit more about this, but we've worked with the Bureau of Reclamation over the last four years. And they have done a, a, a really exceptional effort in moving the levers that they have access to, to produce a $2.5 million grant for the campground. And this, if we, if your decision was to move forward on exploring the opportunity to match those funds, then we'd be leveraging those dollars for sure. So next slide, please. So Rachel mentioned a few of these at the beginning of the presentation, but this is just some more lenses to filter the discussion through growing and diversifying, intensifying population within the urban growth boundary. Multiple park providers within the county and there are some gaps and we don't have a full understanding of what those gaps are and what they mean. Our existing park assets require capital investments. We, we have signed agreements that we're looking for to find funding for. It doesn't have to be this funding source, but it could be. And then we don't have a master plan to guide our investment strategy. So that's why we're, we're coming to you and asking for your direction on how you would like us to move forward with these. So that's a little context and a little bit of information about the Metro Local Share Funding. Next slide, please. So I just want to talk a little bit with you about our recommendations and those recommendations include capital projects and planning projects. The capital projects are for short-term investment and a planning type project would set us up to fill in some of the gaps in information that we have to, to really prepare the board and provide you information in the future about how you might like to proceed on park-related issues. So Eagle Landing Park, it's a well-used and critical link in the chain of, of Toaltown River Access Points. It, we have seen recent investments upstream and downstream, Rude Bridge, Rude Bridge Park in Hillsborough and the Farmington Paddle Launch that Metro has opened in 2019 or recent investments that are surrounding our facility. This, a new facility at this location would enhance public safety. Currently, the, the old access point, which was a metal staircase, was washed out, you know, winter storm several years ago. We have subsequently performed a needs assessments, I'm sorry, a feasibility study. We have design concepts, cost estimates, and all of those options would enhance public safety. Currently, you have to scramble up the, the muddy bank and a, and a new facility would definitely enhance public safety. So public support, we understand that there are multiple people who have communicated directly with you about their desire to see a new facility at this location. We're happy to work with them and others on developing a facility that serves the needs of all Washington County residents. And the last one here is that project will meet all bond measure criteria for community engagement, climate resilience and racial equity. So I, I didn't mention that, but those are, or I mentioned it quickly. But those are three of the criteria that will apply to all of the projects that we, we have moving forward is community engagement, climate resilience and racial equity. And next slide, please. Okay, so this is in, considering the development of a community campground at Scoggins Valley Park. So camping has long been desired at Scoggins Valley Park since the park was really built in the 1970s. There's millions of dollars of infrastructure at the potential campground site already in place. The roads have largely been paved. There's power to the site. There's septic systems in place which provides an opportunity to, to develop the rest of the project at a significant savings because it was invested in many years ago. This is again leveraging resources. We have, we're sitting on a $2.5 million grant from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. Multi-generational community demand and strong support for this Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. This has been their singular point of attention for at least as far back as, as I can find in the records. The campground is their A number one priority and the current Parks and Recreation Advisory Board supports this project strongly as well. It meets the criteria, the Metro criteria, expands access to nature and encourages new communities to enjoy outdoor recreation with infrastructure and programming. And this particular project wouldn't, wouldn't only incorporate racial equity and climate resilience and community engagement in the plant, planning and design of the facility. But we have the opportunity to make those things last throughout the lifespan of the project through programming. You know, we have the opportunity to do all, all kinds of special activities and create opportunities to encourage people who may have never been outdoors before, including historically underserved populations to come and explore outdoor recreation at Scoggins Valley Park through programming now and in the, into the future. And we'll do that with partnering with community and local nonprofits. And of course, we'll make sure that the facilities will meet all the bond measure criteria. Next slide, please. A couple of other things for your consideration as we talk about campground at Scoggins Valley Park. It has the opportunity to, to be an economic engine for tourism in Western Washington County. It is a unique regional amenity. As I mentioned, there's no other publicly accessible lake in Washington County, not of this size and kind for sure. It's a complimentary regional amenity. With Oxbow Park, again, we can bookend the regional area with these, this really wonderful facility that would encourage all kinds of new people to come and explore the outdoors. Camping is identified as a need in the statewide comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. That's the plan that the state provides all of the various counties that talks about what the public wants out of their public parks and recreation. And then long equity, long after, after construction through partnership and programming, mentioned that one. Next slide, please. The third recommendation that we have here is, is a Parks Gap Analysis Study. The board may wish to have future conversations about the broad topic of Washington County's parks. And we, in order to inform those future conversations, we need more information and more data. And a study of this type would facilitate a deeper understanding of those issues, the deficiencies, community needs and, and wants. There's a variety of forms that this could take. It, it wouldn't have to necessarily be a gap analysis study. It could be a feasibility study. It could be a master plan. But really this, this could be designed to gather the information that you would find helpful in your future conversations about parks in Washington County. And on this slider listed some of the things that could be included. Where are gaps? Who has access? Who doesn't? Target areas for investments and so on. So I, I think for, for us to, for you to have meaningful conversations about the future of parks, it might be worthwhile to invest in having a plan to, to provide us more information. Next slide, please. Okay, so here's the summary of the recommendations that we shared with you today. The first one is to construct the Eagle Landing Park Facility. That one's pretty far along. That one is $537,000 approximately. Consider the Camp Lake campground, I'm sorry, the Hag Lake Campground. That would be $2.5 million and that would be as a match for the federal grant. If, so on this one, we are looking for the board to provide us direction to pursue this project. And if so, the next step would be us working with Metro. Because this project isn't in a master plan, they may require us to do some additional public engagement where the outcome of that makes it clear to them that the campground is a community desire. And if that's the case, then we can move forward. So what we're asking for today is for you to provide direction on whether we should continue that conversation with Metro on this specific project. Consider a gap analysis study or a feasibility study or whatever kind of study that you determine would be most helpful in providing you the information that would inform your future conversations about parks in Washington County and other, what, what, whatever the, the board decides that it would like to do. These are certainly not the only three options. These are our recommendations for you, but there are other options as well. Next slide, please. And so with that, like to get your feedback on today's recommendations and you will be listening.
Chair, your audio is not working right now.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Schweitzer and Ms. Fuller for bringing this to us today. I know I have appreciated the improvements to this proposal. I do know that Vice Chair Willie has an external event he's going to dash to. So why don't we start there with you, Vice Chair Willie?
Thank you, Chair, for that. And I've just got a couple of, of comments. I really like the presentation and the options you've given us. I appreciate the advanced meeting that we had and going over a number of these things. I like the idea of a master plan or a strategic plan, but with that, I remember that this has been, this has probably been over 20 years ago. The city of Hillsborough was looking at a criteria of a specific number of acres of park per 10,000 people. I can't remember all of that, what the dynamics of all of that was, but do, I, I would like that, I guess, to be taken into consideration for either a strategic plan or future planning or something kind of a goal to shoot for. Because I know at that point in time, we were pretty woefully short as the city of Hillsborough in meeting that criteria. And I think they have finally, 20, 25 years later, I think they have now exceeded that. And that's just a guess on my part. I don't have statistics. But anyway, do we have anything like that that we would be using for the 55,000 citizens that actually would be, I mean, there'd be a lot more people using our parks, but would that be our baseline criteria? So I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a metric that we should be shooting for in here somewhere.
Thank you. That, that's a great point. That is a common way of understanding how parks, parks are provided to a community. Accessibility, right? If you can walk to one within a quarter mile of your home, you know you're well-served. So that would be part of the information that I, I mentioned where we have a gap in understanding. We don't really know fully where all of the parks are, how people use them and who is underserved, where those underserved areas are. We can talk in broad terms, but with, with what these, what a gaps analysis study or a needs assessment study would produce is information just like what you were talking about.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Who's next of our four commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
Carl, I, I appreciate the feedback. When I read this in the packet, I, I looked at it and I said, well, for 30 years, we've been saying we're not in the park business and you decided Mesker Park, but that's really not ours. That's a, as you know, that's an LID and, and the Scoggins only happened because of the dam. So I, I cautiously go into this thinking that, you know, we have cities with parks. We certainly have a, a great park district, Beaverton and unincorporated areas. The only thing that they don't attend to obviously is the river and Eagle's Landing is a great example of some things that can be done. So I, I, I too like the study aspect. I, I guess I'm a little torn because I, I don't really want to jump into something that's not something that we've ever done before in the parks business. But at the same time, I guess it's, it's helpful to take a look and, and see what sort of recommendations it might have. So I, I'm all in favor of the $200,000 that you're proposing. I think that makes a bit of sense. As, as far as the camping grounds that has pluses and minuses, and I've already tipped my hand on Eagle, Eagle Landing site, that I think those kinds of things are recreational facilities. Cities will never attach, you know, get involved with nor the park district probably. So I, I like, I, I like that, but I think it's premature. So I like the study and that's where I would land and then see where we go from there.
Other commissioners, Commissioner Theresa and Commissioner Phi.
Well, I think this is where Commissioner Phi was going to bring up the public safety question that she asked in our meeting. I, I just want to say that I'm, I'm in favor of this. I've, I've expressed to Carl the, my interest in public input as we move forward. So I, you know, I would support the input for, for our strategic park conversations. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Theresa. Carl, I, great presentation again. I think our meeting was yesterday. So this is all fresh in my head and, but I did forget to bring up one thing around parks and this is around public safety as well. It was sort of a thought that I had when I was at Shahealem Park, the, the Shahealem Ridge Park and, and then I forgot to bring it yesterday. But so what I was wondering was how does all this money-moving pieces, how does it all fit in with public safety and what conversation that happens around public safety? And I'll just tell you the thought I had, I was I was hiking with a friend of mine and I asked the question around like, oh, what happens if there's a safety concern at Chahalum Park? So that's where my thought was coming from. And I, I think yesterday we talked about the Hag Lake and the cell reception and all that. And I appreciate your consideration and all that conversation. But today specifically, I want to ask, um, public safety and how do we, um, just more understanding?
Thank you for that question. The, the first step, uh, in this process with campground will be, um, uh, the, the board giving us approval to continue the conversation with Metro about, uh, whether this is a viable project or not. And, um, uh, once we get to the point that it is and we start, uh, developing it, the next step will be, um, to get a, 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 a design concept, and also a business and operations plan built. And the outcome of that, I expect, will have, um, a discussion about how the campground pays for itself with no county contribution and funds the appropriate level of staffing, including public safety, to make this campground, um, a, a safe place to exist. We currently have park rangers on duty at Skoggins Valley Park seven days a week, three, almost 365 days a year. In addition to that, uh, a, and two on weekends during our peak season, which is about six months out of the year. In addition to that, I expect that, um, a traditional way of managing campground would be to have a campground host so that there would be somebody on site most of the time. My hope is that it, well, my expectation is that in that, um, operations and business plan, that we look at specifically at public safety. And perhaps, and I don't want to get ahead of myself here, but perhaps the campground would, uh, fund a part-time deputy that would, uh, be able to provide additional coverage of Western Washington County, specifically our, our park properties. It could also include an additional park ranger that, um, you know, a, a night park ranger. All of that will be determined in our business and operations plan. But public safety, of course, will be, um, absolutely a fundamental pillar of, of however we design the facilities and how we operate the facilities.
Thank you, Carl, for that. I, I really appreciate where and like where you're heading with your, um, the direction you're heading with this design. If I may, I would like to offer up, maybe reach out to Under Sheriff Cook, John Cook, to, um, because I think I had a conversation with him, I think it was yesterday as well, right after check-in. And he has a lot of good ideas around public safety. And I think, um, he'll be asset to you in terms of your design and where public safety fits in. And, and then also, you know, if we're allocating money, uh, we don't miss any, you know, there's no unintended consequences in allocating the resources. Then later we find out, oh, we didn't allocate resource to public safety. So now they're under-resourced and they can't really respond. But if there's a clear expectation, you know, we're paying you, you have to respond if there's safety concerns. Uh, I think it's a better, um, you know, as a park user, it makes me feel better that there will be somebody responding, uh, beyond park rangers. Or there's a, some kind of a accountability that's clear to the community who's not involved in every day, you know, um, planning of this. So I appreciate your comments and let me know how I can help.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm, I turn it back to Chair.
Well, I want to be, I want to make sure I understand. Can we go back one slide, please, to the summary? Commissioner Phi, are you supporting the overall summary? Or are you looking for all that operational detail before proceeding?
Thank you, Chair, for that clarification. I, I am supporting the direction Carl's adding on Rachel with this. I am just, uh, offering the opportunity to include the sheriff's office in the conversation of the, uh, future planning and design.
Great, thank you. Alrighty, so I'll follow up in sweep. First, a reminder question for me, Carl. Could you remind me, I know the Washington County Visitors Association helped fund a initial proposal for a campground at Hag Lake. And I was wondering, um, what do we call that? Report, plan, whatever that was?
I, I don't recall a specific title to that. It, it, it's probably old enough now that, um, it, it, I would have to dust it off to be able to give you an accurate information on that.
Okay, I believe it was foundational to, uh, pursuing the federal grant. I just can't remember the extent of the work that went into this, it went into that. So, um, thank you. So as, uh, as Ms. Fuller and Carl had the opportunity to hear, and as I mentioned at our board meeting last week, I reached out to the park districts and the mayors of our community about this proposal of how we might use the Washington County local share. And I appreciate how today's presentation clarifies that there is money collected from 26% of the total urban unincorporated Washington County. So about 55,000 households that are providing this approximately $3.8 million or so of funding for potential use. And that our staff has, uh, looked at how those dollars may be put into practice for further benefit, not only of those residents, but also, uh, by, uh, Washington County in partnership with our other communities. This leads to a question that I have, uh, for you, Ms. Fuller and Mr. Schweitzer. What sort of early scoping conversations or discussions have you had with park director peers? Uh, and maybe Ms. Angie also through city manager and service district manager meetings about this, um, potential, uh, funding pool and how it might be put into action, not only for those 55,000 house or population, but also more broadly?
There is a quarterly park directors' meeting that I participate in. The topic of conversation for the last couple of years, of course, has been, largely focused on local share implementation. That's a hot subject for everybody. So, uh, we, we have had the opportunity to talk, uh, in, in those meetings a, a little bit about how, what projects, uh, the, the jurisdictions are looking at moving forward with. We have also had, uh, conversations with Metro about the, the concepts here. We wanted to test the viability of them, at least at a preliminary level, and have shared with them that these are projects that could be considered, uh, by, uh, your board. Had site visits with, uh, some of the Metro staff, uh, including, uh, John Blasher, the Director of Parks and Nature. But all of that was predicated on the, the, the point that the Board of County Commissioners has not made a decision yet about how, how to move forward with this. It was all, um, sort of baseline information, knowing that it could change. So we have had conversations with others about this. I, I haven't reached out to necessarily to any, um, city managers. That's a little outside of my purview, but, um, have had conversations with Metro about these projects.
Ms. Angie, I see you're unmuted.
Thank you, Chair. As the board is aware, I meet with the city managers and special district managers, uh, once a month. We were waiting for this conversation. And then in my monthly update, I will, um, brief the managers on where Washington County is at. Typically, what occurs is then, um, others typically chime in to if they have questions or concerns. And sometimes then it lends itself to a larger conversation, depending on the subject.
And I would add, Chair, that really gets to one of the key policy questions here is what is the level of comfort that the board has in allocating, considering allocating these resources to existing efforts? And then, as, uh, Ms. Angie said, we would then start to share those plans with others, get some feedback, and we could certainly, uh, bring that back for board consideration.
Thank you. Sorry, there's another scent. And I don't know from where. So, um, thank you. I've certainly been learning a lot along the way, uh, about the community at large that we have. We had a great presentation last week on census and the overall numbers for our community. And the, the map that you have provided here, Carl, helps tell the story about how we have 600,000 residents across Washington County. We're, we're fortunate to have this local share funding. Uh, and, uh, there is, is a lack of access to camping, uh, within Washington County. And we know based upon the visitation at Hag Lake, that it is a popular place. I am really heartened by the level of use that Stubbs Stewart State Park, just outside of Washington County, the, the amenities that that campground offers for year-round camping, including cabins. I don't know if our campground here would be able to brought, provide cabins versus tent sites and also the universal access that is available. But I think we should practice the art of the possible and, uh, move forward with this opportunity. And also with Eagle Landing. Boy, I've learned a lot about river access for our Tuolaton River. And improvements made not only at Rude Bridge Park, thanks to the city of Hillsborough, but also with, uh, the Tuolaton River, uh, nature park that Metro opened up, uh, at the Philip Harris Bridge. So I think the improvements that you're looking at for Eagle Landing will also be another exciting project. And that gap analysis will only help us get better, uh, as we move forward. So, um, uh, at this stage, I am thumbs up, uh, for these ideas. I think we will need to have more engagement with our city partners as well as, um, THPRD plus our Metro partners to, uh, help ensure that they can all identify with this same proposal that we've had the opportunity of identifying with, both through our briefings as well as this presentation today. Thank you very much, really appreciate it. So you're hearing a majority of commissioners, uh, being, uh, interested in moving forward with, with your proposal as we see summarized on this slide today.
Thank you, Chair Huntington, and thank you, Commissioners.
Great, thank you very much. And that brings us very close to the noon hour. We've made good progress on four different topics. We have three more left for the afternoon. So I think what we'll do at this juncture is depart early for our lunch break. Ms. Angie, based on staff access, would you like us to, uh, convene, uh, right at 1:00? Or, you know, a few minutes before? Can we still?
Right, excuse me, uh, right at 1:00, uh, because we have two small, uh, 15-minute items and our GR update is time-certain, uh, because we have our federal lobbyists with us.
Great, great. Well, that looks like we will be able to end our day earlier. If, uh, everything goes well, uh, possibly around 2:30 or so in case, uh, any of you need to make adjustments to our schedule. So, um, without further ado, let's take a lunch break and reconvene our work session at 1:00 P.M. Thanks, everyone. Bye-bye. Are we on the same channel? The new channel.